We're live, Warden Danielson.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to thank the staff before we get into the budget for all the hard work they've done. I know that they've all been working on this for quite some time, so hopefully it'll be a process for us. Sorry for the background noise. I have a motion to adopt the agenda for this morning. Moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Moffett.
Moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be resolved that the agenda for the January 11th, 2021 special meeting of Halliburton County Council be hereby approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Excuse me, Warden, did you want to do the roll call or?
Oh, my apologies. Yes, please.
Counselor Moffett.
Present.
And Warden Danielson.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
I believe Counselor Kennedy is not able to be here today. Counselor Burton.
Present.
Counselor Ryle.
Present.
Counselor DeWolyn.
Present.
And Counselor Shell.
Present.
Thank you. So this is primarily Elaine's day. Did you have comments that you wanted to make, Mike, before we started?
I will do a bit of an introduction if that's okay. Each year, staff try to present a draft budget that incorporates the direction we received in long-term planning documents, strategic plans, and each year we try to move closer to sustainability, and Elaine will talk about that. But that just means having the money to fix what's broken at the appropriate time, or fix or repair. These long-term planning documents, and there are a number of them, that have informed this budget are asset management plans, and those usually have at least a 10-year horizon. Our housing and homelessness plan, which has a 10-year horizon. Our housing asset management plan, which is over 30 years. Our strategic plan, which is for the term of this council. Our destination management plan. Our growth plan. Our official plan. And climate change adaptation and mitigation plan. And those are just documents, long-term planning documents that council have debated and approved. And all of them inform this budget that we see today. We do know that this is a very challenging year, and that may result in more changes than we've seen in the past. And staff certainly understand that our work isn't necessarily done. A 3.86% increase is a challenge in the current economic climate, there's no doubt. There are a number of factors that have led to that increase, and again, I know staff will talk about these in more detail, but there's some new or enhanced programs, and there are some funding reductions from senior levels of government. And before I say too much about that, I do want to also add that without the safe restart money and the COVID money that the federal and provincial governments have provided us, this would be a very different looking budget. So while we will talk about some funding reductions, the government has certainly come through for us in other ways. Some of those changes that I've talked about include the health unit increase, which is a result of some provincial changes. That's $46,000. The OMPF reduction, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, that has been reduced by 36,200. The full implementation of the debt, which was a decision made prior to the pandemic, but that is $150,000 additional in this budget. Shoreline preservation has been included in here, that's 88,850. No cannabis funding. You'll recall that the intent when the legalization first came in is that if sales reached a certain threshold, they would share everything above that with municipalities. They don't believe they've had the success they anticipated, so there's been no money to share. That results in $75,000 in lost funding for us. We, a bit of a success story, but a success story that cost us money is the physician recruitment program, and that is an additional $50,000 in this year's budget. A development charges study, an extra 66,000. And we've had a change in our insurance deductible from 50,000 per incident to 100,000 per incident. And we will talk about that later, but so we've added $50,000 to this year's budget. So all told, more than, almost 3% actually of the 3.86 is captured in those numbers. So it was certainly a challenging document to put together right from the very start. So again, I think we know that we've provided a lot of opportunity, we hope, for this will be a standing item on every agenda until council is prepared to pass it. So we know that our work isn't necessarily done, and we're certainly prepared to follow council's direction as we move along. And with that, I'll turn it over to Elaine.
Good morning, Warden, deputy and councillors. I trust everybody got their binders before Christmas. Sorry about the timing on that. I just wanted to give a quick overview of the binders. So you'll find in the binders that the presentations are at the front. They have a tab, but then there's a tab for the tax assessment, which shows the tax rate and the levy. Then there's another tab for reserves, and then a tab for comparisons of 2020 to 2021 by division. Then you get into all the tabs of all the divisions, which show the line by line. And then at the very back of the binder is all of the 10-year capital going forward and the five-year capital going backwards. Or is there any questions on how the binder is set up? Nope. Great. All right, I think Mr. March is going to put up the presentation. So the presentations are color-coded due to an error in printing, so they have color-coded tabs. So I'll start with the first one. Next slide, please. Okay. So the goals and objectives for our budget for 2021 are to ensure that our tax increases are as low as possible, provide efficient service delivery, and we want to enhance sustainability. In order to do that, we followed a zero-based budgeting process as best as we could, and we tried to incorporate all of, we did incorporate all of the directions from council with respect to service delivery. For example, shoreline bylaw enforcement, and then there's quite a few others. Next page, please. So the budget process this year is a little bit different from last year. So this is our first draft, and you're seeing it January 11th. We do hope that at each of the council meetings in January and February, and the committee of the whole in February, that we'll be able to do any updates if you require them. And then we do have a proposed adoption at council in either February or March. And if it has to be later than that, we're okay with that, too. So the budget process does calculate the tax levy that's required from all of the member municipalities. Next page, please. So the capital budget in our proposed budget is based on the asset management plan and the capital asset schedule that we first prepared last year. All of the future operational costs are included for any asset that we're buying this year. And we do actually have a forecast going out five years. It's sort of a more of a general forecast for operating, but our capital forecast going out 10 years is very specific. Next page. Again, this year we used the zero-based budgeting process, and we used Questica, which is a software that allows us to enter all of our budget. I'm not going to speak to the next two slides, just so you know, each of the multiple lines. The Questica allows us to budget multiple lines, and when it does that, it rolls it up on the reports that you're looking at, and all of the comments get listed for that line, even if there was 10 lines that went into that. I think you guys are all familiar with reports, so next page, please. And next page. Okay, so the process for today's presentation of the budget is everybody will give a high, well, I'm going to give a high-level overview of the county. I'll update preliminary year-end results for operating. Actually, everybody know, okay, sorry. And then I'm going to update preliminary year-end results for capital. We'll talk about the 2021 funding opportunities and challenges, the 2021 budget pressures. And then each director is going to give an overview of their cost centers. And everybody will include a line by line of their 2021 operating budget, highlighting any items that are significant, and also highlighting any 2021 capital budget requests. We are always trying to work on sustainability, which we've reached in most of the areas, and that is why we do have the 10-year capital forecast. I believe really the only two areas we're still working on trying to reach full sustainability are in roads and bridges and in housing for social housing, wherever else we have met the sustainability that we require. Next page, please. So the high-level summary of county operations for 2020. Next page, please. So the operating budget for 2020 overall, as of November, and actually have December's numbers. So I'm going to speak to December's numbers. The preliminary December 31st, 2020 numbers show that we're 97.2% spent in operating and that we've spent 88.46% of our capital expenses. We do expect to end the year on budget. We do expect there will be some more adjustments coming through due to audit and due to any invoices that are coming in after the year end. We're still keying those in. So at year end, we're slightly underspent in both, and anything that will be underspent will be transferred to working capital or other specific reserves based on council direction. Next page, please. So capital update for 2020. Like I said previously, we have 88.46% spent in capital, and most of these things have now, this is the percentages by each division. I haven't updated these for December 31st yet. We are close to coming in on budget, and whatever we didn't buy in 2020, we are putting the monies aside to reserves for next year so that we can potentially purchase them next year, or in 2021. At the year end, unspent capital is transferred based on council direction. Next page, please. So the 2020 budget overall, this is your first draft, so it reflects staff's understanding of council's expectations combined with the department planning documents. We are utilizing as much modernization and safe restarting, start funding where we've received direction from council. This first draft gives us a 3.86% tax rate increase. That is aided by 0.8% increase in assessment per impact. Impact this year, they didn't do any of the phased-in assessment values on housing, so that 0.8% is simply our growth. So that's new builds and new additions to different properties. So that results in an $877,000, $878,000 increase over last year's levy. So the proposed levy for 2021 is $199,21,636. Next slide, please. Some of the things that have impacted on us this year, the 2020 funding, 2021 funding. We did have a decrease in our Ontario Municipal Partnership funding. It decreased by 36,200. The province has been phasing that out as they phased it out on our side. Generally, what happens is it increases on the local side. So we hope overall for the county and the member municipalities that either results in more money or at least equal amount of money. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Funding, formative-based, increased by $19,396. Federal gas tax rebate increased by $24,906. Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, Resilient Stream. We have submitted $100,000 for County Road 21 for 2021, and we hope to receive that. And then we did apply for $175,000 of NDMP funding. I think those excesses are for a year, but I can't remember when. Continue to, so we are going to continue to apply for funding as opportunities arise. Next slide, please. Some of our external budget pressures are employee benefits. So our manual life benefits that we provide to employees, they increased by 5.7%. So that is an impact of almost 34,000 over all of the organization. And insurance also increased. We have an increase of 35% over last year's budget, partly because last year the insurance went up way more than what we had budgeted for. So you're seeing the big increase hit this year. It's actually a 5% increase over what we paid in 2020 that we have in the budgets, but it's a 30% increase from last year in the budget. So that's roughly $77,000 increase. Insurance rate increases were largely due to increases in property insurance due to, and this is something that's happening globally, due to forest fires, flooding, property damage, all of that. Historically, you're used to hearing that it's due to liability, but the problem in the past two years has been due to the property increases. In fact, Aon has had a hard time placing a lot of people's insurance. We are now with a company for a property in the US, so it's Great American Insurance Company that we're with. As a result of all those problems, they ended up having to increase our deductible from 50,000 to 100,000 per claim, and that actually happened last year in 2020. Luckily, we've only had one claim in 2020, so we don't perceive that as going to be a huge impact, certainly not on 2020. It definitely will impact us going forward, will be a big impact going forward in the event that we have any claims that exceed that minimum deductible amount. The health unit also had an increase of 10%, so that's 46,000. In total, that totals 189,000, which is approximately 1% of our estimated tax rate. Next slide, please. Some of our internal budget pressures. So these are some of the things that we've done because, number one, we were asked by council, and number two, we thought it was to provide appropriate service for our constituents. So physician recruitment, we've increased by $50,000 so we can bring more physicians online for us. The development charge study is 66,000, and adding a shoreline preservation bylaw position costs 88,000 for a total of 204,000, which is also approximately 1% of our estimated increase in our tax rate. Next page, please. So some of the 2021 budget pressures for the county overall are, we are continuing to build our sustainability, and we also want to ensure that our reserves are at some sort of a consistent, appropriate level. So reserves are approximately going to be 5,858,000, 5,858,000 by the end of year 2020. I haven't made any transfers yet to those reserves, but that's the estimated transfers when we did this presentation. The initial goal that we had for reserves, based on the minimum requirement by Ministry of Municipal Affairs, was 4 million. One of the things you want your reserves to cover is ideally, the 4 million is about 20% of our levy. Ideally, we would like to have our reserves to be about 25% or more because you want to be able to cover at least three months of your operating expenses. So I think we are there with our reserves. So our reserves are at a sustainable, sustainable level provided that they aren't just specifically for projects that we haven't finished, which is part of the place, part of the spot that we need to work on with reserves. So within this year's budget, 2021, we have proposed $100,000 transfer to the working fund reserve to bring that up a little bit. Every year we try to add that so that we can increase our working capital reserve so that we have that available funding in reserve in case we have to cover operating costs. So proposed transfers to reserves for 2021 are $872,000, and proposed transfers from reserve for 2021 are $2,075,000. Those are largely due to social housing, bridges and culverts, and bringing in the modernization and safe restart money. So the estimated reserve balance at the end of 2021 is $4,655,000. Next page, please. Budgeted sustainability, so we are constantly striving to be more and more sustainable with our purchases for capital. So sustainability is the ability to have funds available to purchase, to replace, or to repair critical, critical infrastructure and assets as required. We want to be proactive. We don't want to be reactive. We haven't been completely successful at not being proactive. We do have some things that happen that we have to, you can't guess that they're going to occur. So we are working towards sustainability. We have reached it in many areas. We continue to strive for it in roads, bridges, and social housing. And that's about it on that slide. Next page, please. So overall, county capital projects in 2019, we spent $6,551,000 on capital. In 2020, we borrowed money, $3 million, and we spent $9,573,000 on capital. And this year, we've gone back to $6,702,000 on capital, largely due to not borrowing that additional $3 million. We do have some debt built into this year's budget. It is $310,000, and it's related to a bridge. But we'll speak about that later. Okay, next slide, please. So I'm going to now go over the 2021 budget for Division 010, which is General Government. It includes all of these cost centers. The one new cost center that you see this year, actually, there's three new, are all of the COVID cost centers. So they are funded, fully funded by the Safe Restart, and the EMS is funded by specific MOH, Ministry of Health, funding to cover COVID costs. I'm going to speak to the COVID-19, the not EMS, and the same applies for the EMS. Next page, please. So operating update for 2020 for the COVID-19. This is only for admin staff and other staff, not for EMS staff and not for library. So it was unbudgeted in 2020, and currently at November 30th, we have spent $53,000. Like I said earlier, it's expected to be fully funded with the Safe Restart funding. Next page, please. Update for Accessibility Committee. Due to COVID, we weren't able to put in the board, the augmentative board that we wanted to put in at one of the playgrounds. We weren't able to do that in 2020. So the operating budget is under, as of November. And I guess that's the capital budget, but it's also under in the operating budget. Next page, please. So in 2020, General Administration, we do expect to end 2020 on budget. Actual revenues are higher than expected due to the modernization funding for the Service Delivery Review. Also, the $1,435,000 that we got for the Safe Restart funding. And we received 20,000 more for Ontario Municipal TP is looting me now, funding for more than what we budgeted. Revenues offset the decrease in, these revenues offset, revenues offset by decrease in investment in interest income. Our investments this year did not do as well as we would have liked, largely due to COVID. So they're 13,000 under budget. We didn't lose money on them, so that's a good thing. Most of our investments are just in high-interest savings accounts. So our expenses are lower than expected. Wages were down by 77,000. Unutilized training in health and safety were down by 31,000, and unutilized legal fees, 3,000. You might be wondering why wages and benefits are under. This year, we had a decrease in our WSIB rates, and that has had a big impact on how much we are paying for those. Next page, please. The Impact Assessment Office is expected to end 2020 on budget. They send us a bill at the beginning of every quarter, and it has matched the budget exactly. Next page, please. Council is also expected to end 2020 under budget by about 13,000. That is largely due to unutilized mileage and conference expenses due to everybody doing things virtually in 2020 because of COVID. Next page, please. The physician recruitment for 2020 has been quite successful. We are expecting to end 2020 under budget by $9,000. Unspent funds will be transferred to the reserve for future expenses related to the physician recruitment. We have a couple of payments this month in 2021 for our new recruits, so we're looking forward to seeing more of those in the future. Next page, please. I guess I am going to do the operating update for COVID for EMS. It is also unbudgeted in 2020. Currently, 109,000 has been spent as of November 30th. It is, and then we have a funded part of that is funded by the Assessment Center funding, and the remainder is funded by the restart funding. Next page, please. We had to set up a separate cost center just for the top-ups that the ministry offered to EMS workers. So this is fully funded. We received $281,000 of top-up, and as of November 30th, we spent 120,000 on those top-ups. Unspent top-ups will likely need to be returned to the ministry, or the ministry might provide more top-ups in the future that will be funded from that. Next page, please. The health contribution to the health unit is expected to end 2020 on budget because we did budget in our, what we put in our budget was what they had asked for. And initially, although we weren't paying that amount, we did decide, council decided later to pay, to pay the remainder. Next page, please. Operating update for 2020, this is the debt. It's expected to end 2020 on budget, or under budget, rather. We budgeted for six months of payments, but we didn't actually get the debt until October 1st. So we had our first payment in November, second payment in December. So we have some unspent debt repayment that we are transferring to reserve upon council's direction to help to pay for further debt in the future. Next page, please. This is the capital update for 2020. We are currently in the process of implementing the Diamond Financial software. At November 30th, we have spent 63,000 of the 221,000 that was budgeted. We will finish spending the 221,000, but it'll be in 2021. Just for your information, we have now fully implemented the payroll system, and we are working this week on accounts payable and accounts receivable, and then GL to follow sometime after that. The other capital project for 2020 was unspecified equipment, of which we had none. Next page, please. So funding for 2021. Finance continues to look for new funding opportunities. Every year, we always do. Finance continues to assist others with completing any funding applications. Generally, that is either within tourism or roads or NDMP for the flood mapping and stuff. We have applied for modernization funding for the Service Delivery Review in 2020, and we did receive that money. Next page, please. 2021 budget pressures for the General Government Division 010. There always is uncertainty around funding. We do seem to have more funding this year than others, largely due to the Safe Restart money. Next page, please. We don't have any capital projects budgeted for General Admin in 2021. Okay. You know. Would you like me to go through them line by line for admin? Or would you like me to continue on with the slides and then do all the line by line? For all of them.
What's council's preference? Continue with the presentation?
I think it might be easier if we just continue with the presentation because then there's less jumping around.
Before you carry on, are there any major questions at this point? Okay, Cease.
I just had one question with regards to slide 13, and it's probably just clarity on my part. It said the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. Decreased 36,000 from 264 to 205. Roughly in my mind, that's about 59,000. Is this something I'm not reading there?
I must have a wrong number in there somehow.
Okay, no problems.
Sorry, thank you for noticing that.
Counselor Roberts.
Again, just, just a typo for clarification on slide 12, just the slide before it. It talks about with the levy increase, but there's extra digit there in the 19,921. It's just a typo, but. Do you see that? On slide 12.
And actually, there is a difference between the slides we're presenting. And the slides that are in your book.
Okay.
Potentially. They're not, they're not big differences?
Yes. It was just, there was like a comma and then another comma.
Yeah, I think that's correct on the ones I'm looking at, so. Was that on slide 12?
Yes.
In the 2021 levy?
Yes, in both of them, they're just, it's like I say, it's a typo because it's commas.
Yep. I will circle that and take a look at it again. Okay. Anything else?
Carry on.
Okay, so the next section is the Social Services Budget for, it's the update and the budget. Mike, do you want me just to go through all of these slides and you jump in? Or would you like to do all of the slides?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so this budget includes social housing and social services. Next slide, please. So we do expect to end 2020 on budget. For social housing and next slide, please. Also for social services, we expect to end 2020 on budget. Next slide, please. The capital update for 2020, social housing, we had 252,000 for the new Minden units. We haven't yet paid that to CKL, so City of Porthe Lakes. They haven't asked for it. I've asked them if they would like to invoice us for it. They said the payment will come due in 2021. So as a result upon council's. Upon council telling us to, we will transfer that amount to reserve so we can make that payment. So upon direction by council, that's the word I was looking for. Next page, please. In 2021, budget, budget pressures for social housing and social services. Is there's always uncertainty around downloads and uploads. Currently in the budget provided to us by City of Porthe Lakes, there's a 1.3% increase in the social housing budget. Which excluded transfers for the capital project and a 0.9% decrease in social service budget per CKL's draft. So we've incorporated those into the 2021 budget.
If I could just, if, if I might, there are a lot of changes happening with social services right now. Employment Services have been transferred. They used to be provided by the City of Porthe Lakes staff. Those are now provided by Fleming in, in our area as a pilot project. So there's a lot of change going on even inside social services. And once, once we have a better understanding of those changes, we will be asking City of Porthe Lakes staff to come. And provide an update to County Council as a whole. They do provide updates on a regular basis to our JAC committee. But we, we're just waiting for the dust to settle a little bit. There's still a lot of unknowns, particularly around childcare and funding for childcare. So we, we will be, County Council will be getting an update on that in the very near future, we hope.
Okay, next page, please. So in 2021, we have transfers to others for the 250,000 for the new units for Minden. Transfers to other for new units for 2021 of 201,000. Transfers to other is just the account that it goes through, but those are transfers to City of Porthe Lakes.
Actually, do you mind if I take this slide? So just, these, these numbers can get confusing. So the, the 252,000 is a commitment that County Council has made. We've collected half of that each year over the last two years, 2019 and 2020. And that will be paid now. That's for Phase 2 of Pine Growth Place by the Community Center in Minden. We have 201,000 as a sustainability number in, in our budget each year for new units. That is, will be spent with 100,000, 180,000 dollars as half of our commitment. To the Highway 35 development that was just presented to County Council. So of the, of the 201, 180 will be spent on that. That will be a two-year, again, a two-year commitment. And then the additional 21,000 will fund new affordable housing target program. So that is actually our funding for the Affordable Housing Target Program funding. And you'll see that recommendation coming to the January Council meeting. So that, those two numbers added together are form the 201. We also have $250,000 in our budget for sustainability for existing housing units. Those are, you know, Whispering Pines, Pine Growth Place, there's an ongoing maintenance. There was an asset management plan approved by County Council a couple of years ago now. They are asking for 169,244 of that this year. And the remaining 83,000 will be transferred to reserve. There will be a year when the number exceeds the 252,000. And so we will draw on that reserve so that we can, so it won't have any impact on the levy. So again, that is, we're, we're investing in both new units and taking care of existing units. As well as the administrative side of, of our social services and housing.
Are there any questions about that, that particular page? Clarifications? Okay.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I'm going to go on to the line by line. So if you turn in your binder to tab 010, General Government. And it's page one. Just above the, the description line at the top, just above the object, you should see Cost Center 00001, COVID-19. Admin Another. Is everybody on the right page? Okay. So in, for the 2021 budget, we have budgeted 2021 COVID costs for Admin and Other. At the same. Expense that we had in 2020 or something quite similar to. We do expect that to be 100% funded, so it has absolutely no impact on the levy or the tax rate. If we turn the page to page two. This is the Accessibility Committee. You'll see that just above the double line object at the top. So in 2020, we were not able to do the Augmentative Board. So we have carried that forward in the 2021 budget and we will do two boards in 2021. One of them funded from reserve and one of them funded from levy. If we go to page three, if you see at the top above object, it has the Cost Center, Admin, General Administration. Okay. So in General Administration, if you go partway down the page. We have provincial funding. And it talks about, if you look in the description, it talks about the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund. We don't have any budget in there for 2021 due to. We don't expect the government to be sharing any of their profits because they don't see, appear to be as profitable as they thought they would be. So in 2020, that Ontario subsidy line was 75,202 dollars. It's zero in the 2021 budget. 10,202 of that is the power dam funding, which is now down below. We separated that out. We receive that every year. And then further down is the OMPF funding where we have the decrease of 36,200. There is the correction for you, Cease, in what the 2020 budget was versus what the 2021 budget is. So the original number was 241,600.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. Just a question on that cannabis funding. So we did receive that 75,000. Do we have to report on, on what we do with that? Or how that gets spent? Or have we just, okay, Mike looks like he's got that.
Yeah, we haven't been advised that we are, that they're asking for any reports on that. County Council did authorize the expenditure of some of that funding that was put into reserves to fund our share of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. That is being done. So we, I am pretty confident that if we are asked to report on it, we will have an appropriate expense to attach it to.
Yes, and if I could just add to it, the legalization, the cannabis money was 65,000. The other 10 is the power dams in that line. And I do agree with Mr. Rutter, they haven't asked for any reconciliation nor in their initial letter, did they suggest you would, we would need one. Okay, so if we go down to the next section, which is Section 10 Municipal Funding. It's in the italic print. You'll see recoveries from municipalities. We have recoveries from the pre-emergency program. They are down a little bit. And I do understand that that is due to how that is going to be structured going forward. I think that each municipality took on their own portion of that. Maintenance fee. If we continue down to Section 14, which is Investment Income, it's in italics. You will see that I have a budgeted investment income at exactly the same. That is interesting. Sorry, I'm writing notes as I talk. And then if we turn the page, to page four. And if we look at Section 50, Wages and Benefits, I want you to go right down to the subtotal for wages and benefits. It shows a 7.78% increase. A part of that increase, all of that increase, no, most of that increase is due to our 5.7% increase in benefits. So that is our manual life benefits for employees. We budget for the whole corporation here. Because at the time of creating the budget, it's not possible to separate it out between all the different cost centers. So it's incorporated in here, so we pick it up. And that's what results in the largest increase in that percentage. Also increased causes for increase are increases in union. Union wages due to union contracts, step increases, union increases, and the 5.7% in benefits corporate-wide. Okay.
Just to comment on the investment income, so you're saying you're making notes. Do you think you're over ambitious there? Should you, should you decrease that in light of the fact that, that our, we won't likely. You know, interest rates aren't going up so that we should be a little more prudent in, in our estimation there?
I think what needs to happen is I do have more cash that can be invested in a high interest savings account. So it will likely stay the same. It's just I have to do that transfer of the cash to the investment. Okay. Then as we get into Materials and Supplies, which is Section 50 and 52 in italics. We have an increase in office supplies. Some of that is for the thermal transfer for the desktop label printer for our TomRims project. And we have a small increase expected in office expenses. I'm only trying to hit on high dollar ones. So we continue down to page five, right at the top. You can see that training registration increased by 53,770. Largely, this is due to, we have earmarked capital funding from the modernization funding of 60. 60K. Mike, when I looked at that note this morning, I couldn't remember exactly what that was for. Do you recall?
We had, we had, council had authorized the Lean Six Sigma Training.
Thank you. So there you go. It's for the Lean Six Sigma Training. And also in the training for 2021 is a lot of the corporate training that we were unable to complete in 2020. The stuff that we require for occupational health and safety, so it is also incorporated in there. But it'll be offset by transfers likely from reserve. So then you will see that training other is decreasing by 17.28%. We expect in 2021 that a lot of the training, the conferences, et cetera, we won't have mileage, they'll be virtual. So we are expecting to have some savings there. Oh, and here's the health and safety part. Jump the gun on that. So in health and safety, there's a 9.24% increase and that is related largely to the corporate-wide training missed in 2020. If you look at the next line down, which is software licenses, an increase of 48, 48%. That is due to us having maintenance fees, license maintenance fees for both Diamond, the new financial software. And Assist, the old financial software, because we currently have one foot on each program. We are just trying to, and we also have maintenance fees for the Questica Performance Measurement. That we didn't have in 2020. So that is what caused that increase. We do expect in 2022 that we won't be paying for the Assist license fee. And maybe even partway through 2021, we're just not 100% sure yet. If you continue down to Section 54 in italics, Contracted Services. You will see that that increased by 26% or 6,650, $5,500. 5,000 of that is for the actuary. Every three years, we get an actuary. Audit, for lack of a better word, for our employee future benefits. We are due to have one in 2021. I don't expect any huge impact on employee future benefits, but we do require to have that completed by the actuary. We also increased legal fees. To better reflect how much we were spending on legal fees. If you turn to page six. You will see that, wow. Employee future benefits increased by $800. That's per her last report. It shows 66.67%. It's not a huge impact. Then if you go down to current year transfers from reserve. We are transferring less from reserve. This is all related to how much we transferred in 2020. Because of the software. Purchase because we were transferring from reserve for that. So we expect it to be down slightly. So we expect it to be down slightly in 2021. Then we also have, sorry, keep going. If you go down to the Section 99 FA Current Year Purchases, you'll see that we've reduced our current capital purchases by $69,000 in 2021. That is largely because we are not doing, we are finishing the software program. And that is offset by the contribution from reserve above. Also in the contribution from reserve is that additional $100,000 that, no, sorry, that's not there. The contr- in contribution to reserves is the $100,000 that we make to the general working capital reserve every year. Any questions on that section? Okay, if you turn to page seven, this is the MPAC Assessment Office. Small increase, 0% increase, and because of that, it actually reduced what we had budgeted last year. So small amount of savings there. So we have budgeted 2021 at what we actually spent in 2020. Go to page 12, because the next couple of pages are covered by roads. The buildings are done by road. So turn to page 12. And if you look just above the double line with the object in it, you'll see that this is council and council and committee. Is everybody there? Okay, very little change in this cost center, pretty well the same budget as last year. We do have a contribution from the modernization funding reserve to offset the top up for the EORN funding. And we do have a small increase in remuneration for council. We usually link the remuneration for council to any percentage increases for staff, so we have incorporated that there. And then we have increased miscellaneous other expenses by $100.
Just the, I believe Warden Danielson mentioned a meeting, maybe one or two meetings ago, that the, the EOWC keeps a certain amount of money aside for studies, and last year they depleted those with the paramedic study and the long-term care study. So they are asking that that reserve be replenished, and so that is what the $10,000 is. And we are using modernization funding or suggesting modernization funding to do that top.
So I think you're telling me I have the wrong acronym there.
Yeah, it's actually EOWC.
Okay, I will make that correction. Thank you. Okay, if we go to page 104, which should be behind, at the very last page of the Section 050. Is everybody there? Okay, is everybody on page 104? Yep. Okay, so this is the contribution to the health unit. They requested a 10% increase, so we have that incorporated into the budget here. Then if we go to page 105, which is social housing. Mike, did you want to speak to these?
Um, I, I think.
Well, you think, I think you already have, but.
I believe I have covered most of it. These are challenging numbers to follow. We, we follow the City of Coortle Lakes budget template, so they are a little bit challenging. But if there are any questions, we're certainly happy to answer them.
Okay. And then on the next page is social services. So that's just the details for both of those. So maybe I can just give a, a high level. I match every line to the budget that comes from City of Coortle Lakes. The only thing that they tend not to budget is those transfers that we make for our capital to them. So that's why it differs slightly. And that's about it. So then I'm done. Any questions? Okay, if you turn to your next presentation, which is blue, has the blue tab at the top. You will see that that is Mr. Mike March, IT.
Good morning, Warden Danielson and members of council. I'm going to take you through today the IT department, the two budgets that the ID department looks after. So, and those two budgets are the, the IT budget and the broadband budget. The broadband budget includes the costs for all of the internet services for the county and our four local municipalities, or I should say almost all of the services. In that budget, we pay for approximately 45% of the costs, broadband costs for the four municipalities, and then the covers the remainder. In the IT budget, we include computer replacements for all of the county departments, excluding paramedic services and our library. We have software used by all of our staff, such as our PDF software, Civic Web File Pro, all the VoIP services for our various locations, and licensing that also benefits all of our municipalities as well as the county. And that's the, the software services used to back up our data, manage spam, patch software, et cetera. So for 2020, for both the IT budget and the broadband budget, we expect to come in on budget. So a capital update for 2020, we had two main projects. The deployment of a new backup server for offsite and the deployment of a UPS system for our data center. And actually, while the offsite storage server has been done, there was a delay in the shipping of the UPS, so while that was planned to have been completed before end of year, we have yet to receive the equipment, but it is on route. We should expect to have it in place about January than, than early February. Overall, I expect the, the capital budget to come in at just a bit 12% under budget. The difference in this, the difference is due to savings that we found in hardware purchases as well as the fact that in 2020, we refer some of our computer purchases as we move from a five-year replacement cycle to a six-year replacement cycle. Funding opportunities for IT, as per council's direction, we've hired a third IT technician. And this person's wages, benefits, and all other associated costs are to be funded from the Safe Restart Funding Program. A little bit about budget pressures. For broadband, it's, it's fairly simple. Most of the service in there on a long-term contract, so we don't see a lot of fluctuation year to year. One change from 2020, or sorry, one change of 2020 was we upgraded the bandwidth here at this office to help facilitate remote work as well as the Zoom conferencing and so on and so forth. We have $140,000 in the broadband budget that we usually include to go into reserve for future broadband projects, and we're recommending to have that $140,000 again this year. And currently, we're sitting at about a one and a quarter increase at the, in the IT budget in 2021 over 2020, which is just over $6,000. A little bit about budget sustainability. As mentioned previously, the majority of our internet services are on a long-term contract. So unless we add new services or change those services, we don't see much fluctuation there. No significant operating cost increases are expected in the next five years, again, unless we start adding new services. As I mentioned the last slide, we have a recommendation to budget $140,000 each year for broadband projects, and we're recommending to keep that in again. And our IT budget, we include a 10-year sustainability forecast for capital expenses such as our computer hardware and software. Talk a little bit about capital projects planned for the IT department in 2021. We are recommending to replace six computers as part of our standard replacement cycle. The firewall here on our main office requires an upgrade. The public works copier is getting a little long and too, so we're recommending that that gets replaced in 2021. And we have some Microsoft Office licensing to purchase. And as you will see, when Chief Wade presents his budget, we do build back a portion of some of these projects to EMS where applicable. So unless council has any questions about the presentation, I will take you through a line-by-line review of budgets. So to start, the computer budget is on page 13. Now I'll just give everybody a second to, to turn to page 13. Okay, so I'll assume everybody is there. If you're not, please, please stop me. And again, as, as Elaine mentioned, I will be going through and touching on any of the items or sections where there's been a major cost difference over 2021. If I'm going too fast, or if you would like some further detail on anything, please, please stop me, and I'll be more than happy to elaborate. So under our first section, we have our revenues, and for the IT department, our revenues are basically what we build back to our, our four municipalities. And this, these events will fluctuate every year depending on the projects that we have scheduled each year. So there's an increase this year because we have some projects recommended that will, in, in which the county will be the main purchaser and then build back shared costs to the municipalities. Next, we look to take a look at the wages and benefits section. That's, that's number 50 under expenses, and you can see there's a 29% increase. That's due to the hiring of the third IT technician as per council's direction. Though, like I mentioned before, those costs will all be funded through the Safe Restart Funding. If we move down now to Section 52 Materials and Supplies, we have a about 12% increase in our computer equipment, parts and equipment. This line item is used for small capital upgrades as well as some warranty renewals. In 2021, we have a warranty renewal coming up for our main core switch here as well as a larger than usual number of firewall replacements. It's the reason for the increase that line item. We have increases in both the the mobility, that's the telephone line item, as well as a training registration item. This is both attributed to the fact we now have a third, sort of fourth IT employee, a third IT technician. So those costs, those costs, it will increase due to that hiring. But as, as mentioned, those costs will also be built to the, the restart funding. On page two, you will notice there is a sizable increase under licensing this year. Part of this is having to purchase an extra technician license for our new hire, which again, offset by Safe Restart. Another reason is due to the recommendation that we move to Office 365 in 2021. And if we proceed with that, it's moving a sizable portion of our software costs from what would be under our capital budget to operating. Under our, if we go down another couple items, under number 54 Contracted Services, this is a new expense, cybersecurity testing. I will be recommending that we undergo some type of security penetration test in 2021. It's the reason for that cost. And lastly, on page three, or sorry, if we turn the page again, there is a increase, or sorry, a change in the, the cost for both capital purchases, hardware and capital purchase software. These costs will fluctuate each year, and this is depending on what, what projects we have on scheduled for 2021, and also what hardware or software needs to be replaced as part of our replacement cycle. So overall, for the IT budget, we're sitting at just about a one and a quarter percent increase. Does council have any questions for me on the IT budget?
Any questions on IT? Okay, before we go into public works, because that's a fairly substantial a part of the discussion, I think we'll ask for a 15-minute break, if that's okay with everybody. Mr. March?
If, if I may, I still have the broadband budget to go through. It'll probably take about two minutes, if, if that's fine with the Warden.
You could probably take five minutes if you needed to.
So if council can now turn to page 110, and this is the first page after tab 080 Tourism and Planning.
We all there? Go ahead.
So I'll proceed. So the first section is the, the revenue section, and this usually is fairly, fairly static. The only change in, and there's a slight change from 2020 to 2021, and this is just due to some new services that were added in 2020. As the county is the owner of the Bell contract, if any municipalities decide to get new, certain new internet services for any of their locations, then it shows up in this budget and, and build back. So that's the reason for any changes in the revenue there. There was a change in the investment income, and though if there's any question, I, I will refer to our treasurer on that one. Other than that, the, the bulk of, of the costs are under the annual contract fiber. And there's a slight increase from 2020 to 2021. The majority of this is due to the increased bandwidth here at our main location. Again, this was to facilitate remote work, more video conferencing and, and the like. Because this office really is the hub for, for county and municipal staff. So overall, there is about 3.8% difference from 2021 versus 2020.
I could probably speak to the investment income change. It is, council, we're recall that we paid our full commitment to EORN in one lump sum as opposed to five equal payments or four equal payments. There is a, we get 5% interest on that, on the, on the declining balance. So that, that's why the number goes down, but it is a, a very good deal in EORN. Is that obviously, that funding went to fund the cell project.
And that is, that's, that's all I have to present on the broadband budget, so I'm happy to take any, any questions.
Any questions on that portion of the budget? Counselor Moffett?
Thanks. I'm wondering if I can have a reminder on how we are going to fund the extra IT person going forward after the restart funding.
Go ahead, sure. So if we recall, there's been, it was the, the third IT technician is just hired for a two-year term. So once we hit that two years, then we bring the report back to council, at which point make a decision on how to look forward from there.
I, I would, if I could supplement that, we do anticipate that that position will be permanent, and we will start a transition plan in next year's budget to start incrementally increasing that budget to, because we do believe that there will be a need for that person long-term. During our, our budget review, I asked Mike, will this person be here in the future, do you think? And his answer was, I would say a definitive yes. And his answer was, I would say a definitive yes. So that would be a conversation council will have next year, but we do, that is our intention to start transitioning or incrementally increasing the budget in, starting in 2022.
Okay. That is the challenge with, with funding positions out of special, special funding that we receive. But it's one of those challenges we need to deal with going forward. Okay, before we get into public works, thank you, Mr. March. And if we could have a 15-minute break, so that would bring us all back at 10:25. Okay, the next section is public works. And I, if I'm not mistaken, Mike will be taking us through a good portion of that with some assistance from Silvan.
Thank you very much. I, I would ask for your patience as we work through this. It is a little bit of a challenge for both Sil and I to present a budget that we, we didn't develop in many ways. So Sil is available to provide detail. What we have tried to do is incorporate the comments from council last, during last year's budget presentation. And so we will focus less on the binder and more on the presentation itself. But if council want a traditional line-by-line, we're more than happy to do that. I'd suggest that we, we go through the presentation today and then maybe if, if you require a line-by-line, we could do that at a subsequent meeting. So we'll start out on the next slide with a summary of 2020 projects. We've, we've incorporated some pictures so you can see some of the work that you have funded. We did about 12 and a half kilometers of hot mixed pavement. That was mostly on County Road 1. The Glurt Road, we did 41.2 kilometers of surface treatment. We did five kilometers of reinforced surface treatment. We did 10 kilometers of pavement rejuvenation. We replaced the Little Hawk Lake Road Bridge and you can see a picture of that down below. Significant part of that funding was from the provincial and federal governments. The Eagle Lake Road Bridge, we have done one lane. You'll recall from a report that the former director did the additional lane or that the second lane will be done in 2021. But the, the funding is all in place to do that work. We rehabilitated a culvert on Highway 648, County Road 648. And then of course, we did the left turn lane at Halbeam and did the pedestrian crossing signals. Craig has, has done a budget update throughout the year. So I, I don't believe there are any surprises around the costing of any of those projects. But again, if there are specific questions, we're happy to, to provide answers to those. The next slide. Our fleet, we, we purchased one pickup last year. We did the SUV plug-in hybrid. This, when this presentation was done, it was, it had been purchased but not delivered. It has now been received. And we're hearing positive feedback on it. We purchased a loader. We did the two road closure trailers, which have been used on a number of occasions more than we would like. And we did purchase a hot box trailer as well, which really did help our, our, our staff during the spring breakup in particular. And then we purchased a one-time crew cab or two one-time crew cab trucks as well. We were 50,000 under budget in our fleet, capital purchases. Next slide. Our, again, we, we, we did hear comments from council that you wanted a consolidation of some of this information. So we've done our best to do that. Our winter maintenance at November, the end of November 2020 was 65% spent. We were heading in a really good direction. We did have a little bit of weather in, in December, but we do anticipate that we'll be under budget at the end of the year. That's a nice, that's a nice problem to have, one we haven't had in quite a while. Our hope is that if there are any unspent monies in our winter maintenance materials and supplies, that those will be transferred to a reserve for winter maintenance for those harder winters. And we, that reserve has really been empty for a number of years. So this would be a really good news story. We spent approximately 300,000 on 30 in-house culvert replacements. Council will recall that we have a culvert crew that do a lot of, of that work, a seasonal culvert crew, and they do a lot of that work. So they replaced 30 this year. We spent $230,000 approximately on 19 kilometers of ditching, which again is a significant improvement from our, our past practice. And that's done on both sides of the road. We spent about $45,000 to replace 1,600 meters of cable and 450 guide rail posts. Again, this was an area that I think we had fallen behind in and, and we have done a lot of work to catch up on that. And, and then last year, we spent $135,000 or so on line painting. And that, we, that number, well, I'll talk about that later, but we do have, when we have a lot of surface treatment or, or paving, we ask the contractor to do the line painting. So that number does fluctuate depending on the amount of work that we're doing. We spent $63,000 on the rail trail to repair two large washouts to finish the mechanical and hand brushing and to prepare soft areas for new granular surface. Overall, our maintenance budget was about $60,000 under our budget. And we are, we're projecting that to be either at or under budget at year end. We do have some funding that we receive. This will be for 2021. Elaine has referenced these already. We have a formula-based OCIF, our community infrastructure fund. And that is $283,453. We have the federal gas tax, which is $572,839. That flows through AMO. And we have applied for funding 200 and, and I can't do the math all that quickly on that, but we've, we've applied for some funding to do some base upgrades, some signage and some accessibility enhancements to the rail trail. And we have heard particularly from the provincial level, very positive feedback on that application. And we're waiting for a final approval. The, our budget pressures for 2021. We are really working to promote preservation and not worst first. So we want to get to the road before it's at the, beyond the end of its life. That really is the principle of sustainability where we, we replace or repair or rehab the asset at the appropriate time. We, one of the reasons this budget process has been delayed was because of the, the state of our structures and the, and the structure assessment that was done, that was presented to council in December. The, we, we knew, and I had mentioned this in last year's budget presentation, that we had what we thought was a sustainability number, but it was an area that we weren't confident about. And so certainly the more detailed structural assessment that we had done this year bore out our, our concerns. And so we do have some real challenges ahead of us with our, with our structures, which include culverts and bridges. We, we do, our emergency preparedness, last year was the first time that we had ever included what I would call an emergency fund for washouts or anything. And, and it was probably a wise move, but I hope it wasn't a, a, a sign of things to come. We had very, two very large washouts, one on Deep Bay Road and one on County Road 121. Both required lengthy road closures. And so we are certainly recommending that as we move forward, we keep that 70,000 in. But, and, and we pray for the best. Next slide. This is our, what we're looking at for 2021 around bridges and culverts. And, and again, this is, I'll talk a little bit more about this on the next slide. But the, you'll see that this year, we are looking at about needs of about 1.6 million. And that number goes dramatically up next year. And so we really are trying to find, trying to, I guess, come up with a recommendation on the most appropriate way to address those. We've been collecting about 500,000 or, or, no, sorry, about $800,000 a year from a sustainability standpoint. And in the long term, that might work out, but with, with our bridges, our now needs or our short-term needs really exceed that. So we really do have to come up with a plan. The next slide, we've, we've, we've developed three options. And, and I can tell you which one we would recommend, but, and I'm not even sure we'll need a decision today. But the first option is to delay the $950,000 culvert replacement. And that, that would actually solve our financial problem, but we really are concerned about the physical risk of delaying it due to the severely deteriorated footing condition. A second option would be to secure a loan. And, and we have to do a lot more analysis on this, but to secure a loan for whatever shortfall we would have in that bridge project and so, or our bridge budget. So we have about 800,000 that we collect every year. We are suggesting that we could draw on the reserve of 855,000. And then that would leave us a shortfall of about 310,000. We can either secure that through debt financing or another means, whether we utilize our, our own reserves in the short term. But we, again, we would look to do more analysis in that. The third option would be to take the, it's a loan in 2021 for 2021 and future projects. So the one large bridge project that the consultant talked about, we could actually move it forward into 2021. Or move it back into 2021, do, and acquire a much more significant loan. I, I suppose our, our recommended option, because we really do want to do an analysis about what is the appropriate amount of debt and, and county council needs to still approve a debt management policy. Our, our option, our recommended option is option two. And, and do a small loan to do the work that is required in 2021. That deals with the safety issues and, and, but, but certainly allows us some time to do an appropriate analysis. Next slide.
Do you want to hear any thoughts from council about that? Thoughts about the options, Counselor DeVallan?
Yeah, I mean, we've known that this was a sleeping giant that we had to deal with bridges and structures. And it isn't unique to the county all over the province. But certainly an option, I'm open to option two or three. If your thought is to, to do a smaller one in 2021, so that you get your ducks in a row in a much larger kind of philosophical analysis with our 10-year asset management plan and defer the bigger chunk and not pick option three, I would be completely supportive of that. And it, it's the first time I've talked today and obviously how information is laid out, we all have our own biases in both. The, the sections were showing this in the detail to do my preliminary late work before we got here. Has worked very well for me and gives me confidence that, you know, if option two is, is staff's position on this, then I would gladly support it.
Yeah, that, that would be my preferred direction as well, but let's hear what other members have got to say. Counselor Rial?
Yeah, I, I have a tendency to agree with that because we, we got to keep things up and running. My only concern is, and, and this is the, the thing that we got to be careful of, is it's very difficult to take the first loan. After you've taken it, the second, third and fourth become easier. So I, I like Mike's idea of going into this and doing some really good in-depth evaluation before we move forward. And then once we make that decision and should we need to go with two, then, then we, we know we're confident we're doing the right thing. So Mike, thank you.
Counselor Roberts?
Yeah, just listening to it, Counselor DeVallan said about possibly then option three, because as in this year, we don't actually start making loan payments until October. So I'm just wondering if, you know, we need to put in some further thought in while interest rates are low. Maybe we should look at option three because it's coming down the pipeline anyway, these larger projects. And maybe, maybe this is an opportunity to, to just look a little bit farther out for projects for, for, for the future projects, not just in this year's, I'm thinking, anyway.
Other comments? Counselor Moffett?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree that there's definitely an opportunity here. I, I know historically, the county has been largely debt-free and always been very proud of that, as, as have most of the municipalities. We found over the years that not carrying any, any debt becomes a detriment in certain circumstances for funding. So on the one hand, while I worry about, you know, overextension, we do know that our, our ARL is, is substantial and that we can carry this money and we, we need to get to that sustainability sooner than later. You know, that's what we talked about for years, get up on the plane and, and keep going forward. So in terms of a preference, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about just borrowing money for everything and, but definitely would like to see some more details of what that would look like. I think we need to make moves now, carry the money for the long run and, and get the work done to stay within our little green bars on our sustainability charts.
So am I hearing more, more interest in option two? Or, or do we want to get a little bit more information before we make a decision on that? Counselor DeVallan?
I just have a question for Mike. Mike, do you think that, that the kind of additional information before we're done this budget process that we're likely to have in hand? If we wanted to decline a previous premier, a stretch move towards three? Do, do you think within the timeframe of our budget process, that there's additional information that would help us with this?
It's a little challenging because of that we are, you know, without a director at this point. And even our, our, our engineering technician position is brand new, or the person in the position is brand new. So I, I do think though, that if Sil and Elaine and I and, and Adam could put our, our minds together, we could probably come up with some additional reports in the next week, you know, couple of weeks that would provide some additional information and maybe some comfort moving forward. Just taking a little more time to, to, I guess, digest the, the information that was in the bridge assessment report. My concern is more about doing a debt, taking on debt and then coming to you next year and saying, yeah, that wasn't enough. And then you start to get, you know, it, it just becomes harder to keep track of at that point. So I'd really like to spend some more time with the staff that we have in place now to at least digest that bridge assessment. And, and we can come back with a better, a clearer recommendation. We just, honestly, we just ran out of time.
Okay, well, we'll leave that with you for, for a bit. We've got some time before we need to, final decisions and just carry on then.
Absolutely. So this is a bit of a good news slide. We, 2020 winter maintenance costs were actually less than they were in 2019. We are recommending that any unspent winter maintenance budget will be transferred to reserve. That will come as a, a report from Elaine. She does her annual transfers to and from reserves report, usually in January or February. And that we continue to maintain the current winter material budget adjusted for inflation. And we, we have, we are suggesting that that number be increased a little. So, but generally a, a good news story, it seems like we've found a bit of a sweet spot, knocking on wood. We, uh, our next slides deal mainly with sustainability and, uh, you can see from the slides that, um, for the most part, we have achieved sustainability, but, um, in a couple of areas, we have challenges, uh, like we've described in bridges where the short-term needs exceed the amount of, of our sustainability. So, um, we, we have the right number, but we have a short-term problem, um, and that we need to address. So, uh, the next slide, uh, that's our, our roads. Um, sustainability number, you'll see that, uh, in 2021, we're proposing to spend more. The next slide, uh, shows, uh, I guess, the, the, the fruit of your labor. So, uh, the network performance, uh, we're, we're trying to get to, at a minimum, the 75%. And you'll see that that number rose dramatically last year with the work that you did. Ideally, we want to do, focus more on preservation. Uh, Craig did a report a couple of years ago that really showed that that's really the best bang for your buck. And you'll see that over time, our network performance stays in that, uh, you know, above the 75% range. And, uh, and we're doing a lot more preservation as opposed to, uh, resurfacing. So that, that really is, uh, a, a really good news slide. It shows that what you did last year works and that the sustainability plan that you're on is really a good one. And that has all been verified by a modeling software, uh, that, uh, that we, we utilize and, and has proven to be, um, very reliable. Next slide. Um, again, we've talked about structures already. Uh, I don't think our, our sustainability number is, is necessarily perfect, but, uh, we, we do have a, a challenge in the short term, um, with, with, uh, our, our short-term needs exceeding that sustainability number and not having a sufficient reserve to draw on. Next slide, our fleet, um, a little bit of the same story, our short-term needs, and we'll show these, uh, in more detail later, but our short-term needs, uh, uh, we've reached sustainability, but our short-term needs exceed that sustainability number. And, and I'm not sure we have, uh, adequate reserves to fund what we need in the short term. Moving on. Our building, uh, we, we don't really have any sustainability for a building. We did a, a building condition assessment in the fall of 2019. Uh, we do expect that there will be an, uh, a great amount of work needed in energy-related improvements and rehabilitation. Um, with our public work yards, we know that there, we, we really do, one of our, one of the new, uh, directors, uh, first focuses will be on what to do with our public workyards. Our, our buildings are older, uh, and not necessarily as functional as we need. And so we really have to look at those in earnest. So, um, we don't have any sustainability number in for our buildings, but we know that there is a lot of work ahead in those areas. We are carrying over in the 2021 budget, $35,000 for the land registry office roof. It was intended to be done in 2020, but we, we just ran out of time. And, uh, we are also looking to do some roof repair and replace a furnace at the Highland Grove Patrol Yard. Uh, those are, uh, if the roof is leaking quite badly and the furnace does need to be replaced in the very near future. Next. This is the slide I think everybody looks forward to every year. Um, the, uh, this is the, uh, the road projects that are being proposed for 2021. Um, I'm not sure if you want me to go through them. Uh, we've provided a map, uh, showing where they are. Uh, we've tried to describe them as best we can. You'll see that there is a, there's hot mix. There's double surface treatments with fog seal. There's, uh, uh, single surface treatments with fog seal. And that, and then there is, uh, some, uh, uh, rejuvenation as well. So, uh, total, we're, we're proposing to spend $2,753,000 on resurfacing, uh, and, uh, $292,000 in preservation for a total of $3,045,000. Uh, are there any questions about that? We, we've included 2022 and 2023, uh, because these are all based on asset management plans and it really is useful to look forward. I know that county council get a lot of questions about when is my road being done? When is, when is this happening? Um, and so we've done that to give you a bit of a look forward, uh, for the next two years anyway. Our asset management plans extend beyond the two or three years, but quite honestly, every spring, we look at the road condition after the spring thaw and, and sometimes we, we have to do some adjustments. So, uh, projecting it more than the two years, we, we've found to be a little bit of a, a guess. Are there any questions on that? Not hearing any. We can move to the next slide, which is your map. That shows where the, where the, uh, roads projects will be in 2021, moving forward. These are the 2022 projects. And again, you can see we're about that sustainability number, $3 million total, moving forward. Uh, and that's the 2021, um, that's the, uh, structure projects or bridge projects that we've talked about. So there is a $950,000 culvert rehabilitation. There is the Fishtail Lake Culvert, and I, I think we saw a lot of pictures about how it had rotted out at the bottom. That's 615,000. The, uh, wearing surface on the Horseshoe Lake Bridge, 84,000. Uh, guide rail, uh, that is the steel guide rail. Uh, it's not the typical kind of, of, uh, you know, posts that we have. That is the steel on the S and Lake Culver. And then, uh, in order to prepare for a surface, a resurfacing project on County Road 13, we have a significant number of culverts to replace. And so we're proposing about $200,000 to do that preparatory work for 1.9 million. And again, we will bring back a, a subsequent report, uh, asking for further direction on how to fund that work. This is a, a, uh, map of where those projects will take place. And then here is our fleet plan, and this is actually over a couple of different slides. Uh, you'll see that we are proposing to purchase a half-ton pickup, uh, cabin and a half that will replace a 2008. We are proposing to purchase a dual-wheel four-by-four crew cab with dump box, which is replacing a 2008. And a tandem plow, which council, uh, has authorized the RFP already. And I think we'll see a report on Wednesday, um, uh, recommending a preferred bidder. That, uh, the next slide shows, um, our average annual, which is our sustainability, is $560,000. But you can see, uh, and that, that actually, we, we are funding that. But you can see that in 2021, the needs are 618,000. They go up to 857 in 2022 before they start to, uh, stabilize a little bit and for a year or two. And then, and, uh, so we know that, um, we have to come up with a better solution. Uh, sustainability, we may have the right number in the budget, but it doesn't actually meet the need. So one of the first things we will ask, uh, the new director to work with our operations manager on is making this, uh, this, this plan work better. Um, this year, we've, we've suggested that we include the 618,400 in the budget. And, uh, and so that is included in here. Uh, oh, I should say, if we can go back, um, also that there is a four-by-four backhoe, uh, that, uh, we're replacing a 2007 unit with and a water tank, uh, in the, for the back of the truck. And that is, uh, an absolute necessity, um, that, that the previous tank failed. So, uh, we really do need to, to replace that. Um, the line-by-line, again, we're going to take a little bit of a different approach. And if council want a, the traditional line-by-line for the public works budget, we'll, we're happy to do that. We'd suggest that as, uh, subsequent meeting, but if we can move to the next slide. Um, on, uh, page eight, well, the, these ones we can actually go to, so page eight of the binder. Uh, the first, that is the, uh, the administration building, if everyone, I'll wait. We do have, uh, if everyone is there, we do have a, an increase in the cleaning budget. We, uh, did go into RFP last year and the, uh, you'll recall that the tender came in a little higher. Um, we, we do reallocate insurance based on information that the insurance company provide us. So that has gone down for the administration building. Um, page nine. Uh, we, um, that is the, uh, Menden Daycare Building, which is under construction right now. There is a, uh, that we, we get a dollar per year rent on that and then they pay the utilities as well. Uh, but we did receive that building, uh, free essentially. And, uh, and so we've incorporated those, uh, in, those lines into the budget. Uh, and then we do have insurance on that building as well for $3,360. And that's the major change there. We will be bringing a report forward in the next little bit. Council will recall that we authorized, uh, the, the replacement. When they did the building inspection prior to us, uh, taking ownership of the building, they identified some deficiencies in the furnace. And so, uh, because of our, our commitment to energy efficiency and, and, uh, reducing our, our climate change impact, council approved the replacement of the furnace. And I think we have to bring forward a report on that in the, in the next month or so, because that work is, is almost finalized. Uh, the next building on page 10 is the Halliburton Daycare. Uh, we, uh, we do have, we did, we did replace the roof in 2020 and, uh, that has been very well received. We are, uh, there is more work to do, some, some gravel in the parking lot and some other things. There's a change table that we would, uh, like to purchase and, and some, um, moving things around inside the building, but they're fairly small. We're suggesting that, uh, the, uh, the $12,500 is, is enough to do that work. And we do receive rent on that building. You'll recall that, um, when, when council purchased that building, you, um, you paid for it out of reserves and we are replacing that with the rental income. And then we, we are paying, um, interest to the reserves as well. And, and I think, um, Elaine has noted that to be 2%. So, uh, that's $36,000 from the rent and then $15,000 to replenish the interest on the reserve. The, uh, registry office I've talked about already. Um, this is a, we received rental of $40,500 from the, from the registry office. The, uh, that lease is, is up now and we are, uh, bringing a report forward in the near future on that. We do have a $10,000 transfer to reserve as well, um, for building maintenance moving forward. And we are proposing that we carry the $35,000 from 2020 forward to replace the roof. Um, we joke, there's, it's, it's our first, uh, pilot project for a green roof, because there's actually plants growing on top of it now. So, uh, it's, uh, it really needs to be done. So that is, is the buildings per se. Um, the next.
There's just a question, there's a question from councillor DeVallan.
Yeah, just a question, Mike. Uh, with the change in Ontario to a digital land registry, in terms of the medium and longer term, uh, with the tenant we have there and the incomes and what we may or may not do with that, is there enough known yet to, where that may go, uh, for us?
They, they have indicated that they would like to renew the lease. So I, I guess that, um, is the short term. Um, much, much of the, I guess, there has been a lot of conversation at the staff level about, um, what happens in the future if, if there are, um, depending on the results of the service delivery review and other things, um, we may have a need for more space and what would we do if that were in fact the case. Um, the, uh, again, that, we would do that as a report to council. Uh, we wouldn't make any presumptions in that area, but that's an area we'd like to explore. Um, but we don't really have an answer for that until we see where council go with the service delivery review. In many ways, it's a more accessible space for something like a council chambers or other than, than the one now. And then we could utilize the existing council chambers for, uh, office space. But, but, uh, so much of that is just conjecture and we, we would honestly, there'll be a report for council to consider before any, any action is taken on that.
And it's my understanding that at the present time, the request for renewal of the lease is solely for storage purposes?
Um, there, there are staff that work there, um, but, uh, it's not open to the public. So, um, it's not, you know, it, it may be that their, then their needs have changed as well and they may be able to find a more cost-effective alternative than that one. Uh, but we're under, our understanding is that the building is not open to the public. It is, uh, simply, uh, there's a, there is a staff person there at least though.
Any other questions?
Um, the next, um, is our 911. It's on page 17 in your binders. Uh, and, uh, you'll see that there is not much change here. Uh, we do have, um, some increased demand for road name and 911 signage. We've, we have experienced some Blue Jay challenges again over the last year or two. And so we're seeing that there's more demand for, for some signage. Um, and, uh, but the, the budget doesn't change much. It's about $4,769. Any questions on 911? Uh, moving to page 19 and the rail trail. We do, uh, you'll see that, uh, revenues have gone up about $6,000. That is a contribution that we are receiving from the Halliburton ATV Association and that has been, uh, very much appreciated. Council will recall that was adjusted a little bit in 2020, because they didn't have access to the trail as early as, as we would. They would have liked and, and, uh, um, due to the, the health emergency. But, um, we are anticipating the full $6,000 this year. We are proposing a $268,125 in capital purchases. That includes a, the, uh, ICIP or the grant, uh, application that we made to, uh, do the resurfacing, some signage and the accessibility. Uh, I, as I mentioned earlier, we've received positive feedback from the provincial government in particular, but we are waiting for, uh, a, a final approval on that. We are, uh, we've increased the amount of wages being spent there and the amount of, uh, contracted services, which is really for dust suppression, grading and trailside mowing. Uh, we are, uh, trying to find the balance between machine brushing and hand brushing and, and, uh, we are, we're, we're attempting to find that balance. So we are allocating some more, um, some more staff time to that. We continue as well to transfer $10,000 to a reserve for future needs there. Are there any questions on the rail trail section? Not hearing any. Um, the next few slides deal with pages 20 to 40. This is again where council had, had asked for a little more consolidation. If we haven't hit the sweet spot with this, we are happy to spend more time on it, uh, at a future meeting. But, uh, um, if, if, uh, we haven't answered a question that you were having, please feel free to stop me and, and, and ask that. Um, we, uh, you'll see that, uh, we are increasing the amount of recoveries from municipalities. This is actually just, uh, right sizing the budget. We've, our experience has been that we are, are receiving close to 40,000 per year. Uh, that is for work that we do for the municipalities. We have reciprocal agreements, uh, in, in place for winter maintenance in particular. Um, we, uh, we have increased our, our roadside brushing, uh, contracted services this year for, uh, by $50,000. We're finding that, uh, we, we are falling a little bit behind in that area. And so we want to have a dedicated focus to that. The, uh, roadside brushing is important for a number of reasons. It protects utilities, but it also, uh, has shown to really limit, uh, animal collisions and, and, uh, so, and it, it actually helps with winter maintenance as well. So, uh, because the sun hits the road better. So, uh, we're increasing that roadside brushing and, uh, we are looking at new steel beam guide rail replacements. And we are looking at new steel beam guide rail replacements. We've included forty thousand dollars for that. We've, as I mentioned in my other presentation, we. We have spent a great deal of time catching up on our our traditional guide rail or the the posts and and wire. Guide rail, but we haven't included any money in the past for steel beam and we have a number of them that are damaged, so. And then the, this is actually the budget that includes the seventy thousand dollars for emergency covert repairs, which we're recommending stay in. Any questions on that? Moving on to the works yards. We are allocating a little more wages to the to the works yards this year and we are proposing to, as I mentioned earlier, to replace the. Portion of the roof at the Highland Grove Yard or to repair the roof and to replace the furnace. And that's the twenty four thousand dollar capital purchases and. Other than that, I think it's pretty. Pretty much the same. Any questions? I, there's no question that we we have to. Delve deep into our works yards. We really need to. We need a long term plan in that area. Moving on to equipment and fleet. We have a number of pieces of equipment that we're proposing to sell this year that we think have some life or some value as an asset, so that number has increased from the sale of proceeds. Sale proceeds from pieces of equipment we're proposing will go from forty five thousand to sixty four thousand nine hundred. We have proposed to right size the parts and repairs budget. We're finding that our annual. Actual expenses are exceeding our budget, so we're proposing to increase that to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we are looking at right sizing materials, material supplies. From fifteen to twenty thousand and that is essentially shop tools. Any questions there? The the fuel, you'll recall that last year we had reduced our budget for fuel. Based on the assumption that we would be buying the card lock system. We got really, really lucky with the price of fuel dropping because we didn't purchase the the card lock system. We don't think we'll be exceeding budget, but we do think that the the number is still right at a hundred and eighty thousand. In case you were looking at it and wondering why that number hadn't dropped when we had purchased the card lock system.
Counselor Roberts?
Yeah, so we did approve that. Can you, was that for last year's numbers or or budget rather, or is or is that, did we approve that ahead for two thousand twenty one? I can't remember, sorry.
The the purchase of it, you mean, or?
Yeah, the card lock, the purchase of the card locks.
So so the card lock system, you've approved the purchase, it will happen in two thousand twenty one. We expect. But but we budgeted last year based on an assumption that we would have it, so that's why the number hasn't changed because we assumed we would have it in two thousand twenty. We we expect we will have it now.
Okay.
Any other questions there? Moving on to engineering. The the only major change here is in contracted services and we did have some. Surveying expertise on staff in the past and and I think there will be some transition, so we we've included this for, we've increased the professional services and contracted. Contracted professional services from six thousand to twenty and that is really to fill that gap for survey and other consulting work. Other than that, the the budget really hasn't changed much. Any, moving to overhead. I I again, I don't think there are. Many significant changes here with the exception of the insurance deductible and Elaine talked about that. We try to have one claim in our budget each year. I wish we didn't need to do that, but we have found that it's not unusual to receive one per year. If that money goes unspent, our recommendation is always that it be transferred to a reserve and for insurance claims. They. But it, that one. Certainly caught us by surprise, but I'm not sure there were any options. The one thing we have asked this year is we'll be asking Aon to come and present to council. The insurance renewal and we'll do that on an ongoing basis. I think it's important that council have a good understanding of. Both the coverage we have and also the. The. I guess the environment for insurance because it really does change often, so with unless I hear. Direction, otherwise we are hoping to to see Aon shortly with an insurance renewal. And that is the the final. Again, I I apologize if. It, if it's disjointed, it wasn't a budget we we developed personally, so. But we're happy, if we don't have information to answer questions, we'll certainly get it for you.
Any more questions or information required on public works at this point in time? Okay. You got a fuzzy sill. So we'll move on with with EMS. I think EMS is next. Good morning, Chief.
Morning, Warden and members of council. Welcome to. EMS segment. I think I can keep it fairly brief, but anyway, please don't hesitate to ask any questions, so. Mike, if you can just put up the first slide, please. And next. So again, emergency services consists of paramedic services, emergency management, our public access defibrillation program and community paramedicine. Next slide, please. Presently, all are operating within budget and that included the additional Torrey Hill upstaff of thirty six twelve hour shifts, which was approximately. An additional forty six thousand in two thousand twenty. Next slide. Our twenty twenty capital purchases included a new ambulance, two ambulance laptops. Our public access defibrillator replacements, we replaced eight of the older units in the community. Some of them were from around the two thousand and seven, I believe, so. We're just keeping them updated and we're in the, we have in the but the budget last year, the. The commander and vehicle for the community paramedic. It's in progress. We haven't purchased it, but that purchase is in progress. And then there are IT capital purchases of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty eight dollars. Next slide, please.
For for council's information on that, we, that's one where we are balancing the climate change, the green fleet policies with. The practicality of of a, an emergency response vehicle. And so there has been a lot of conversation at the staff level and and that that's really why that delay has occurred. Obviously, all of those. Purchases are approved by council, so you'll see the end result of that, but that it's not that we are just delaying that. It's, it has been the subject of a lot of conversation.
Um, yeah, and a lot of that conversation is once the vehicle's purchased, it's the conversion and the ease of conversion to making a first response vehicle. And that's why I've been dealing a lot with the, there's only two conversion companies in Ontario, so it's. It's a case of whether what's practical to convert and what you can convert with that they actually have engineering completed on. And if they don't have engineering completed on it. I I've talked to other services and they've tried to pick and choose just the odd. Vehicle that doesn't have engineering and they end up with lots of electrical issues and problems, so that's why we're being very, trying to be very careful with with the purchase of that vehicle. And is fifty percent of our operating budgets funded by the Ministry of Health Long Term Care and that's based on last year's actuals. So some of our pressures that we see in two thousand twenty one would be fuel prices. They're still down right now, but who knows what the what will happen with them in the future. And overtime is dependent on call volumes and our out of town transfers and we are seeing call volumes increase. Certainly quite dramatically this year due to the to COVID. Next slide, please. So for our sustainability, we purchase a new ambulance annually and every sixth year we purchase two. The present lease for the defibrillators has ended and is now completed, so the replacement for new defibrillators will be five to six years. And we transfer to reserves as per the asset management plan. Next slide, please.
So if I just could ask about that sixty four thousand dollars with with the leases now completed. Do we continue to budget that sixty four thousand dollars and put that into reserves for future acquisition?
I I believe that was the plan and I think that's part of the 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 transfer to reserves we're doing. If Elaine could just verify that for me.
Yes, I believe that that is part of the transfer to reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Um, capital purchases for two thousand twenty one, new ambulance, one hundred and forty nine thousand. Pad replacement, that's annually. We put ten thousand dollars a year towards the pad program. Ambulance laptops, there is per required replacement. Because the laptops are different models now, they're an upgraded model. As we order new ambulances, we are including in that the laptop mount in the ambulance, but. We we have to retrofit one of the ambulances this year with that that laptop mount, so that's thirty five hundred dollars. MDOCs is is sort of a software enhancement to go with our present iMedic with Interdev. The idea of the MDOCs software is that it's, it'll decrease a lot more of our our paper and keep a lot more of our documents electronic. And then IT capital purchases of eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Next slide. Also, again, propose, we proposing an additional thirty six twelve hour shift. To shifts to the further upstaff the Torrey Hill car at night. That's approximately additional forty eight thousand with wages and benefits. And this will provide the county an additional ambulance at night annually from the twenty fourth of May weekend right through Thanksgiving. So now if we just want to go to. The line by line section. And that's under the tab zero five zero health. And if we start at page ninety six. I'm just going to highlight some, I'll highlight the the biggest changes. There's not a a lot. So on page. Sorry, ninety six is the COVID costs, which Elaine has already covered. So if we go to page ninety eight. I'll just go to the very bottom line of wages. You'll see an increase of eight point four seven percent. That includes the additional thirty six shifts at Torrey Hill, but it's a larger increase. Because we've also using the safe restart money. We're staffing Torrey Hill January until the twenty fourth of May as well, so that's where you see. That that increase. As we work our way down. On page ninety nine, near the bottom, Elaine has already covered the increased insurance costs. That we're. We're seeing. And if we go down to the middle of the. Page one hundred. I have removed five thousand out of the one line legal and professional services because we have no negotiations this year. And we've moved it to the line of contracts as we have two contracts and that's for the preventative maintenance of our power cuts. And for the preventative maintenance of our. The defibrillators. I'm just going to take you to page one oh one. And our capital purchases, you'll see there's a significant decrease there and a lot of that has to do with. Certainly, we have, we paid off our defibrillators. We've purchased all our power cuts. And. So there's not a lot of additional purchases required this year. We've kind of got everything up, all our equipment up to up to par right now, so mainly the purchases are a new ambulance each year. And that's, that's the the significant changes in the EMS portion or the. Ambulance portion of the budget. If we go to page one oh two, again, this is our community paramedicine. It's sort of a zero is because that's all. Those costs are billed to Triple H S who are funded by the Lynn for our community paramedic program. And then we go to the next page, which is. One oh three and that's our emergency management and it also includes some public access defibrillation charges. Of throughout the year, which is just maintenance, maintenance. Costs for the the defibrillator, thirty nine defibrillators we have out in the field includes battery changes and pad replacements. Because the batteries run out, of course, and the pads expire after a certain amount of years. And that is all for. Emergency services.
Questions? Counselor Moffett?
Um, I think it's an odd, maybe an odd place to put this question in, but I I think I ask it on a regular basis. Has there, is there any consideration for Chief of finding a way to allow paramedics and firefighters to talk to each other? At one time, there was radios in the ambulances so that. The firefighters, if they didn't need to be attending because the ambulance was already on scene, they could call them off. Just wondering, in the world of COVID where we're trying to keep people away from as many people as possible. I don't think it's something for, you know, today's budget discussion, but. I'm taking the opportunity to raise it once again that we have talked about, you know. Inter-vehicle communication between emergency responders to just be more efficient. There's just a tremendous number of times when firefighters. Go to a medical call or, you know, an ambulance assistant, but when they get there, the ambulance is driving away. So you've taken people from work and from other. Other duties. I know they signed up to be volunteer firefighters, but just keeping exposures as limited as possible these days. It's my question again.
I I think the answer to that is those additional radios wouldn't make a difference in that. Because all the communication is done with dispatch with the with the ambulance. What happened, those, I think each of the fire services are now going to digital radios. Those could be of benefit is if they were at. Say up in Halliburton Forest and then they could talk directly to the firefighters on scene if the crew was waiting at some. At a point for them to bring a patient out, so the the amount of use would be would be minimal. And but where the, as far as canceling firefighters off a call, if they're responding on a call, that's. If the ambulance knows that the fire has been tiered and they don't always know that they've been tiered. That would be done through dispatch, through direct communication through dispatch to just cancel fire, so I encourage the paramedics to to do that, to. Cancel fire if they if they know they have been dispatched and and they do no longer require them, but. Unfortunately, it doesn't always happen because they don't always know if they've been actually dispatched to the scene.
Hold up.
Um, yeah, and and again, broke, Carol Moffett, the broken record on this. We've been having this conversation for, or I maybe am the only one for years. I think we can do a better job of this. There is definitely a disconnect with dispatch. If Counselor Kennedy was on the screen today, he would concur. He and I spoke about it at length a number of times when he was the EMS chief, so it's not the end of the world, but I I think that that collectively we can do a better job of this. And I I disagree respectfully that it doesn't happen very often. I certainly can tell you that up here it happens a lot. That, you know, you've got two fire trucks and six personnel attending a scene where the ambulance is driving down the road on the way to the hospital, so. Anyway, I'll leave it there for today, but just my little, my little, my little peck at that issue, which I think I bring up every year, so hopefully someday we'll be able to. Have some fruitful conversations with the whole dispatch and communication process to alleviate some of these challenges, but anyway, I'll I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. I thank you, Chief Wade, unless there are any other questions. I think we will move on to library.
So the library presentation is the second red tab on the presentations.
Morning, Erin.
How are you this morning?
Good.
Okay. So, oh, there we go. All right, so good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'll start by just going through some very basics about what the public library is. I know a lot of you probably know this or have heard it before, but it's good just to put us, locate us into the, into the overall picture of things. So we provide a publicly funded service that provides access to technology, public space and lifelong learning. Of course, COVID has presented us some challenges, so we've changed a little bit how we do things. We've made a shift to online programming and having more online resources with continued access to our physical collection and spaces when we're not in lockdown with the appropriate safety measures in place. We've also increased our equipment lending to provide more access to technology as well. Next slide, please. We have five full-time staff that provide internal service to all branches. So that includes programming, collections, administration, that type of thing. We have 18 part-time branch staff. We have a part-time courier and we do have a part-time grant-funded support position as well. Next slide, please. The governance of the library, the board, the library is governed by a board of directors that's appointed by county council under the Public Libraries Act. And our board composition consists of one to four county councillors for public appointees and the warden as an ex officium member. Next slide. We have seven physical branches. They're spread geographically throughout the four-member municipalities of Halliburton County. We have an administration office, library depot in Dorset. And we have one online service point. When I say that, I'm referring to our public access catalog or our website. However, we do find we're increasingly using places like social media as online service points to answer public inquiries. Next slide. So for the 2020 budget, we actually did end with a surplus and that surplus will be transferred to a reserve. This happened as well in 2018. And this was largely a result of some staff members being on leave. Next slide. Our funding consists of, so the county is our biggest funder, but our funding also consists of the funding from the Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture, Friends of the Library, whatever targeting, funded, targeted fundraising we do as well as grants. Next slide. So the funding we get from the Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture is our public library operating grant that sits at around $120,000, sorry, $120,000, pardon me. And that has remained largely unchanged since about the 1990s. Next slide. Our ministry funding is a bit of a process. It requires an in-depth survey of library activity in order to qualify. So that includes detailed financial information, statistics about library materials, staff and staff capacity information, detailed technology information, programming information and community partnership statistics. And all of these statistics are, go into a set of public library statistics that are accessible by the public through the ministry website. Those are done by libraries all over Ontario. Next slide. The Friends of the Library is an incorporated body that fundraises for projects that are not in our core operating budget. And those funding decisions are made by the Friends Executive. What we do is we provide them with a wish list of enhancements we would like to see made to our branches and projects across Halliburton County. Next slide. We do do some grant-funded work as well. They are, they tend to be project oriented. They can be a little bit unpredictable, somewhat time-consuming to apply for. And they're not used for necessarily things we want to sustain in the long term. So, but we can, they do give us the opportunity to do some things that we maybe wouldn't otherwise be able to do. So just recently, we had four student grant-funded positions over the late summer and winter where we had students working remotely and helping us with the accessibilities of our online programming videos, writing captions for them. So next slide. Our 2021 budget pressures include an increasing demand for downloadable products. So as the pandemic wears on, we are seeing a very large increase in the use of our ebook and audiobooks collections as well as our e-resource collection. So e源sources being things like databases. So this year, this past year, we actually put more purchasing into ebooks and audiobooks. And as a result, we also saw the usage of those materials go up. We don't have a specific budget line just for ebooks and audiobooks. That goes into the general collection, book collection budget. But we do keep track of that, those purchases. We are going to be undergoing a partial migration to a new ILS, which will require a new website in 2022. So I'm currently preparing for scenarios and approximate costs for that to present to the library board. And there will be a cost increase in 2022 for our online public access catalog. So I just mentioned that here because largely the, our 2021 budget is pretty much a maintenance budget. There's no real major changes in it. But 2022 is going to see some, some new challenges for us. Next slide, please. So for future sustainability, we do have a small capital reserve that was began in 2018. We do have a 2020 surplus that can go into the reserve and that can be some help as well. And the library board is of course looking at different ways that we could increase our fundraising potential. And we do pursue grants when the opportunity arises and there's an appropriate application for those grants to our circumstances. Next slide. The 2021 changes in the budget. Like I said, there's not a whole lot of changes for us. There is a 2% salary increase, which is fairly typical. We are looking at approximately 5% increase in print materials. Those increases in print materials largely come from changes in the publishing industry as well as in the exchange rate with the US dollar. So sometimes you'll see fluctuations in the US dollar and then down the line that will ultimately affect print material prices. We also budgeted an additional $1,900 for e源sources. This is largely gone to a database we have now called Canadian Major Dailies, which allows people to read a number of major Canadian daily newspapers online. And that has been very well received by the public. Our budget is on page 107 of the binder, I believe. So if there are any questions, I will be happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Do any members of council have questions with respect to the libraries budget? Were there any specifics there that you wanted to highlight? Or you think your, your presentation has covered everything, Erin?
I think the presentation covers pretty much all of it. Yes, thank you.
Questions, comments? Okay, well, it sounds like we're good for now. Thank you, Erin. Your much appreciated presentation. And we'll look forward to seeing you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
So next up is tourism.
Good morning, Warden and council members.
Morning.
So digging into the 2021 tourism budget. The tourism budget for 2021 includes some revenue from the Safe Restart Agreement Fund to support the High Caliburton Festival in the fall and the Destination Management Plan implementation. It also includes expenses for marketing, the High Caliburton Festival Fall Edition, tourism staff, our travel trade program, the HHOA and general operations. Next slide, please. So as of November 30th, 2020, we were at 82% of total budget. We are expected to come in on budget for 2020. There was no revenue from the High Caliburton event due to the event cancellation in the fall. In terms of marketing activities, as you know, we put a number of our more expensive and print activities on hold during the early stages of the pandemic and pivoted in the fourth, third and fourth quarter of 2020 to digital and local and hyper-local marketing activities. Contracted services will also come in on budget and that covered the Destination Management Plan project. Next slide, please. In terms of 2021 funding, what we're looking at is there's 12,500 in reserve for High Caliburton due to the cancellation. And then we were looking at some funding supported from Safe Restart for that High Caliburton Festival in the fall for $25,000 should the festival happen. So there will be a report forthcoming on, on that decision for fall. And also looking at the Destination Management Plan, we're looking at requesting 25,000 from the Safe Restart funding to help support the implementation of that plan. We're also applying for the newly reopened Rural Economic Development Program. The first intake is February 1st. We've had some very fruitful conversations with the program advisors of that, of that program to date. Next slide, please. In terms of budget pressures, I think there's some unknowns around, you know, tourism, travel, market. We will be able to market and won't be able to market potential challenges around what we can implement for the Destination Management Plan, depending on, you know, our success of funding with RED and, and other programming. And we will continue to seek funding opportunities as they become available. I think 2021 may bring some interesting grant opportunities forward just as a result of, you know, rebounding out of, out of the pandemic. Next slide, please. Thank you. In terms of the Destination Management Plan, and we do believe it's critical to move forward with that plan, implementing as much as we can, working with some key partners there. And you'll see the request for $50,000 to support that plan implementation in the 2021 tourism budget. So just, that's the presentation, fairly high level. But if we want to just take a look at the line by line, it should be in page 113 of your binders, I believe.
Are there any questions on the presentation so far?
Okay, great. If everyone's on page 113, are we all on the same page? So just starting with looking at the revenue, as I outlined in the presentation, there's a mix of rural economic development funding application, reserve, and also some restart funding in there as well. And then looking down to the expenses line, looking at some of the larger expenses. There's the, starts with 4,20721, there's four marketing lines there. That is in line with the same budget as 2020, looking at $120,000 split up into those four categories. And then below that, we have the budget for the High Caliburton Program. One of the larger numbers you won't see in there is we had $8,000 in 2020 allocated for events. As council made the decision to not do the big picnic event anymore for future events, that's now gone for 2021. The remainder of the expenses down to are fairly standard and in line with prior year. If you look at contracted services, we do have the $50,000 in there. Again, to support the Destination Management Plan implementation. The next line is the $10,000 transfer to the Halliburton Highlands Outdoors Association. We did receive an informal request and I suggested that a formal request come through to the January council meeting from HHOA with regards to those funds. So if you take a look at the net total, it looks like the, there's a net total reduction of 6.86% from 2020. Are there questions about the line by line specifically?
Counselor Moffett?
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't make my thing work there. I want to just ask a question about the transfer to the hatchery. We've talked about this on and off over the years. It is meant to be more of a sponsorship where, you know, certain initiatives are undertaken to further the brand. And I think we've had to sort of rewrite that vehicle a number of times over the years. So maybe Amanda could speak to where we are on that. It was never meant to just be a gift to their revenue sources. It was meant to be in exchange for, for certain undertakings on behalf of the brand. So where are we on that?
So that has been the understanding and HHOA executive understands that as well. But for 2020, they did have to, they, they did say to me that they faced a significant amount of time that they were closed. So they had to leverage some of those funds to basically keep the hatchery going. So they said that at the January, when they do present to council, they're going to recap what they, how they leverage those 2020 funds and then also speaking to how they will leverage 2021 funding toward marketing and promotions as we've directed in the past.
Other questions? Hearing none? Is that it for you, Amanda?
That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Okay, I guess that moves us on to planning. Just a note. It's 11:43. I don't know that we've got an awful lot more to cover. Shall we carry on and, and try and complete? Or was anyone looking for a brief lunch break? Counselor Roberts?
I don't need, I don't need a lunch break, but maybe just a quick 10-minute top-up, grab something to drink, buy a break and then keep going to finish and not do a lunch break, but a 10-minute now before planning might work.
Okay, we can do that. We will then We will then, this is the perfect time, we will now adjourn. Well, let's say until noon. Okay? We're back live. Go ahead. I'm sorry, I've got this sound in the background that I need to learn how to turn off, and I haven't figured it out yet. Okay, we're now being joined by our director of planning, and we'll look forward to hearing your part of the presentation.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so today I'm presenting the 2021 budget for the Planning Department. Next slide, please. These are a list of the cost centers which we will be reviewing today, and they all fall under the Planning Department. I want to just make a quick note that the GIS Cost Center is where we will see the flood mapping project. The Forestry Cost Center is shared with the Proposed Shoreline Protection Budget, so you will see those items there. And not listed, but is a separate account, which I will go through in the line by line, is the Public Transportation Proposed $50,000 for future costs. Next slide, please. So the Planning Department overall is currently under budget for 2021. This is for the operating budget. Revenues are approximately 36% below what was expected in the 2020 year, and the Land Division section of this budget is about approximately 30% less than what it was, what was anticipated for 2020. And GIS as well is currently under budget for 2020. A lot of these, a lot of the reason for these is due to COVID, some of the work could not be done. And as I had mentioned, a number of council reports last year, specifically with the flood mapping project, there were a few challenges that we had because of COVID and specific work environments. Forestry is another budget item from 2020 that is under budget. And that was, we had put money forward for 2020 in the case that we had moved towards staffing for shoreline preservation, and that money was not used. Climate change is currently on budget to end 2020. And in the line by line, when we go through that, I will specifically point out items where money was not spent in 2020 and proposing to bring that forward into 2021. Next slide, please. So we'll remember, we applied back in 2019 for a streaming of National Disaster Mitigation Program funding, and we were unsuccessful. However, they reopened, they being the federal government and the province of Ontario, opened that funding again in 2020. So we made application for approximately $175,000, and that was submitted the end of the year, and hopefully we will hear the results of that early in 2021. And as I stated, any remaining money that was budgeted for in 2020 will be transferred from the reserves into the NDMP and flood mapping for 2021. We also applied in coordination with the municipality of Dizart at all for ICIP COVID stream funding, and that would be applied, if we were successful, to County Road 21 project. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, some funding for 2021 include federal funding for a National Disaster Mitigation Program, funding from ICIP for proposed County Road 21. We'll continue to look for other funding opportunities where available, and that specifically will be related to climate change program for the municipal mitigation plan that we have in place to see what may be available for this coming year. Next slide, please. 2021 budget pressures are somewhat similar to 2020, and I will just highlight a few of them. LIDAR, as I mentioned before, this is a project that we did receive funding for in 2018. And moving forward, the county has really been funding this through our budget. So any opportunity here to have some support from the federal government would be greatly appreciated. And if not, then it will be included continuously for the next three years at an approximate amount of $168,000 a year. Ontario Municipal Board slash the ALPAT, so we have still an outstanding case that is currently in a civil process, so I have included some money to cover those costs as well for 2021. Next slide, please. Public transportation. So the last three years, we've been including a, an amount of money, putting it forward to cover any future costs should county council decide to move forward with the public transportation system. So that again is proposed in the 2021 budget. Climate change for 2021 through 2024 to implement some of the ideas and projects that have been brought forward, not just through the current municipal mitigation program, but we'll hopefully see the adaptation program in 2021. So there will be some proposed projects and costs associated with that. And I proposed in 2021 to include $50,000 for that implementation. And lastly, shoreline preservation. So should county council wish to move forward with that project, there would be a requirement for additional staffing as well as office equipment and supporting technology for for that staff to take place. Next slide, please. Looking towards sustainability, each year we've been putting aside $15,000 into our GIS reserves. This is outside of the money that we have for the flood mapping project. This goes towards things like the SCOOP program, as well as sometimes we have a consultant that we need to use for updating our GIS system or other software, as well as hard technology that we use, so our GPS unit. That's what that is used for. It's kind of a little account there for us for those items. Flood mapping, as I mentioned before, approximately $168,000 a year. That is what I've identified as the sustainability number. And I mentioned it would be for three years. Climate change funding from existing resources, and I'll speak a little bit to that. As we continue and complete tasks in the flood mapping project, there is money that was originally budgeted in previous years. We were budgeting a higher amount. We have taken $50,000 proposed from that flood mapping to provide some funding for the climate change program, which will have a zero effect on the total budget. So no new money is being asked to support the climate change projects. And based on the pressures discussed, as well as things that may come forward in the future, we will continue to look towards sustainability in the Planning Department. Next slide. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to discuss it, or we can go right to the line by line. I look to you, Madam Warden.
Any questions at this point, or move into line by line? Okay, let's carry on.
Thank you. So the very first page for the budget we're going to be speaking of is page 18 in your binder. So the title of this page is BYMS000, and this is Bylaw Enforcement at the top. So as I mentioned, the forestry and shoreline preservation are included both within this this section of the budget. The first line I'd like to speak to are actually two lines under wages and benefits, so both the wages line and the benefits line. You'll note this is an estimate for two bylaw staff related to implementation and permit review enforcement related to a proposed shoreline preservation bylaw. The next items, all under material and supplies, so you'll see there's new hardware and software to support new staff positions, as well as some mileage money in there, as they'll need a vehicle to go to different properties throughout the county. And this is an estimate for the requirements for the technology and equipment to support two new shoreline bylaw staff. Under 54 contracted services, this is the line where we have pestral forestry, and the contract that we have with them comes out of this line. And the last item I'd like to speak to is contribution from reserve. So you'll note down here, we have 38,000 to be brought forward. So that would be the unspent from 2020 being brought forward to support the 2021 draft and proposed budget for staff in this in this line item. Is there any questions on this?
I know there are some, there's some discussions to be held going forward, starting on Wednesday on shoreline preservation and and some thoughts that members of council have there, but we have we've embarked on our consultation process through the the wait-in process, I think, is is in place now. And we've got consultations in February, so I think we'll be a little bit further ahead as a result of consultations before we have adopted the budget. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can just hold tight on this, that aspect of the budget until we've had further discussion there. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The next page is page 111. This is the Climate Change Cost Center. So as I spoke to earlier, I've proposed adding $50,000 into the climate change budget to pay for costs of implementing the municipal mitigation plan, which was adopted by county council in 2020, in September 2020. So $50,000 would be for climate change initiatives as per the plan. And I've also included $1,000 for promotion and ads and notification, whether that's in the newspaper, as we have that adaptation plan, like I said, proposed to come forward to county council in 2021. And at the end of 2021, we'll be looking to start the public process for the public climate change plan. And that $1,000 will help initiate that that process. And as I mentioned, the $50,000 is proposed to have no impact on the the budget because it's the, it's being transferred or taken from that floodplain mapping amount of money that we already had in the 2021 budget. Are there any questions? Public transportation, page 112. So while I did not include this in my slides, this is no change from previous years where county council has put aside $50,000 to support any future potential public transportation costs, should you move forward with that program. Are there any questions?
Oh, Counselor Roberts?
Oh, sorry.
Just remind me, and I think it was in your slide deck, so was there a max level that, because we haven't been spending it, so putting in 50,000 a year, but was this sort of a ceiling that we say, well, that's enough of our reserve? We don't know what we're doing yet. We keep putting money in a reserve. Was that in your slide deck?
No, it wasn't in the slide deck, and I'm not sure I've received that direction specifically from county council. What I do know is when we did the the plan for a public transportation system, the estimated startup costs were between 190,000 to 300,000 for the first year. So that might give you an idea of where you may want to have those discussions.
Mike?
And I think it's important to note, too, that the costs after the first year, you you are eligible for gas tax, provincial gas tax funding to support it. But the first year, you're not. So I think it's important to, if if county council were in a position to move forward with a transportation system, then you know, you need to have enough money there to fund the first year operations because it wouldn't, there is no funding available to do that.
Okay, page 115 to the Land Division. This is the Land Division Cost Center. And I'll note, there's no significant changes to this budget. It's very similar to 2020. What I will point to is line item under contracted services. You'll see that we still have proposed some budget money in there to deal with the ALPAT. It's currently going through a civil process, and there will be costs, legal costs to the county associated with that. Are there any questions? Next page is planning on page 116. So there's a few highlights to go through on this this budget cost center. First I will bring to is wages and benefits under expenses. So you'll note there is an increase in wages as well as benefits, and these two line items are for the intermediate planner. The wages are to be offset by the SAFE Restart funding, as well as the benefits for 2021. This is proposed to be a two-year contract position fully funded by that SAFE Restart money. If we go down to materials and supplies, where office equipment, computer parts, education and training, memberships, again, all those line items have a small amount of increase. And so what I've done is taken what it costs for one of our staff and added that additional amount for a new staff person, again, covered by the SAFE Restart funding. So you'll note when we get to the bottom, there's that money coming back in into this account. What I've also wanted to bring to your attention is under contracted services, we've reduced that amount there. That's our legal fees for professional services and and legal. So 2020, we had budgeted $5,000, and our costs were significantly less. As you can see, it came in at zero. So this year I'm reducing that in the hopes that, you know, this will be a more zero-based budget line item. When we come down to professional services and contract services, so the very first line on page 117, the first amount that is in here is, it notes $5,000, so that is offset above. So when someone makes an application and we require a peer review of studies or information provided, they provide a deposit, and that would offset the amount in this category being spent. There is an amount of money in there as well for bang the table, so that is a yearly cost. And that also has a benefit to the local municipalities whereby we have an agreement, if your municipality wanted to use the system as well, it would be at a discounted rate because the county pays this full rate. And then you'll note there's, it says $100,000, and that's for the development charges study. From 2020, we did not spend the budgeted amount. The budgeted amount was $40,000. And when we went out for an RFP, the cost came in significantly higher at $100,000. And if you'll recall, we had proposed that the county and all five, or all four local municipalities, so all five total, would do, we'd do the study for all at the same time because that made sense and would ease implementation, should councils wish to move forward. So the cost, as I said, came in at $100,000 proposed through an RFP process. And what we've what we're looking to do is take that 40,000 from last year and add it to this year's proposed $60,000 in the budget for for that cost. And then you'll note that bringing forward from the SAFE Restart and from the previous year is in-line transfer from reserves. So you'll see 117,655. That's that money being brought back in. So is there any questions? So is there any questions?
Counselor Roberts.
Sorry, I've got a lot of stuff in front of me happening here. Just back to a comment that Counselor Moffett made in another department about staffing and staffing someone under the state safe restart program. And I think, can you remind me, you know, just just because that'll catch up to us. It's going to bite us in time if that person is now with, you rarely reduce your staff, you tend to build them. So can you please remind me exactly what a new staff member would be doing and the case to hire somebody?
Sure. So the planning, it's an intermediate planner position. It is a two-year contract to catch up for last year with COVID-related planning files that you know, we either ran out of time or were unable to fulfill the objectives for the planning project of that year. They'll be doing strictly planning work, planning related work and everything from subdivisions and consent files, all of all of that work as well as some of those projects from last year to help us catch up. And one of them would also be doing some work on the flood mapping project as well, because as we know, we're a little behind on that. Any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to GIS, which is page 119. Okay. So right off the bat, I just want to note that we have not included in this budget because we don't know yet if we've been successful, the funding application for the N D M P. So that would be $175,000 would be added into that revenue as a government funding source. So hopefully I'll have to bring forward a report in the near future to council to make that change. So fingers crossed on there. I just wanted you to know because it's it's not showing. The next line I wanted to bring your attention to is under memberships under materials and supplies where you see $45,000. So last year we budgeted 45,000 and you know, we we came pretty close to spending that amount of money. This is for our ESRI membership, which we pay on behalf of all five municipalities because we all use it as well as some of the the software and tools that work inside of that. For 2021, there will be a slight increase in that amount that we have to pay for ESRI at least. So I still think we're going to be within that $45,000, but in 2022, we may have another increase. So I will hopefully at the end of this year be able to bring some some numbers forward. So we know where we're headed. But for this year, I think we're we're still good at that 45,000 budgeted in there. We have contracted services at $1,000. And that's about a sustainable amount. Sometimes we require the use of an outside consultant for for programming or some of the backend with regards to the GIS. So I've included that in there as well. I've got no change made to that transfer to reserve. So that's the $15,000, as I mentioned, for things like SCOOP or new GPS units. And then the last item is the, it says CY purchases of equipment. And this is where we will be making the spends for the flood mapping. So some of this will be to our conservation authority partners as well as some consulting work that will have to be done in 2021. And again, hopefully, when we're successful with the funding from the from the federal government, it will also show up in this line as well. Oh, sorry. And one other item. So we've asked for $175,000 from the federal government for that funding. And in the GIS reserve, we absolutely have our share, which would be 50%, which is $175,000 made up from the unspent from previous years. So there would be no impact to this budget and or to the taxes because we have that money available so we can do our 50%. And that's the last page of my line by line. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Charlesy at this point? Counselor, sorry, Counselor Roberts.
So just back to the point about the about the new position, because it is still in budget discussions. When were you proposing that start date?
So the start date was actually proposed to be the end of last fall. However, it's going to be, I'm going to say, first quarter of 2021.
Okay.
Counselor Moffett.
Forgive me if this has been discussed prior. I noticed that the the budget process and timeline section of the binder is empty. And certainly today was our first high-level look. You know, there's a number of things that I like to ruminate on. I'm sure others would as well. What is what is our our timeline and process for? You said a number of times, you know, no questions today or at the moment. What's our process?
If you recall in the slides that I went through first, so on the second page of the first set of presentations, the budget process and timeline is there. First draft, January 11th, updates for January council, February committee of the whole proposed adoption, February or March or later if necessary.
One of the things that I heard numerous times from from both Elaine and Mike is that you know, you're going to be seeking council direction on a number of items. And I think it might be helpful for council to see that broken down to look for specific responses, you know, where needed. Also, I think councils, now that we've had our first our first run through this, there's obviously things that that, as you said, Carol, that we need to ruminate about or think about, go back, look at the line by line again. And, you know, start to look at areas, you know, where you've got questions or concerns and and see what we can do about that. Thoughts or comments from you, Mr. C A O?
Well, I think we we have some specific direction today about a further report on the bridge. I guess, I guess the bridge program for 2021. So we will bring back a report on that. Our intention, though, is to have a discussion item on every council, on every agenda, both committee and council until we are at a point where council is comfortable to approve it. So our hope is that that's that's done before March. But again, it's not the end of the world if it isn't. We, so what we would propose to do is just have a discussion item on every agenda. And as you go further, we'll include the the bridge on the next council agenda, the bridge review hopefully. And then if there are other questions that come up at that time, we'll prepare subsequent reports and then show you the impacts of those at the the next meeting. So I'm not, I'm not being very clear. It'll be on every council agenda. If questions come up, we can prepare reports that would show the impact of the suggestions or provide more detail for the the next meeting.
So are you suggesting that it would be an open discussion or that there would be targeted discussion? I'm just kind of going back to the fact that that you're, I I heard Elaine say maybe six or eight times, we're seeking council direction on that. And so to me, we need to go back to those specific items where council's direction is sought.
If I could speak to that, most of the ones that I refer to are related to the transfers to reserves of the unspent amounts at the end of 2020. That will come on a standard report as soon as we finalize most of our year-end numbers. And we didn't want to say we were making the transfer without your direction. That's the only reason it kept saying council direction.
Okay. Counselor Moffett.
Thank you. And when I asked about sort of what's our process, I I didn't mean sort of the dates and the I was more thinking along the lines, Madam Warden, of what you just said is we're all, yeah, we're all used to Zoom meetings now, but I I really feel like, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't end up you know, having something on an agenda and then not either giving ourselves deliberately giving ourselves the opportunity to go around again. I I think it's, it would be very easy to not ask a lot of questions because we haven't had a lot of questions today. And I I'm hoping it's because we're all going, you know, our our wheels are all turning with this first look. And so, yeah, I'd like a little more clarification, I think, maybe from the C A O about it's going to be a standing item. Is it going to be? Okay, next up on the agenda is budget. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. I want to make sure that doesn't happen. And and so unless everybody's satisfied with what they see in the binder now, where is our discussion going to happen is what I'm, is what my concern is.
I apologize. I guess I would look for direction from council. I, we can, we can do whatever you would like us to do.
Counselor DeVallin and then Counselor Roberts.
A couple of things. I guess, first of all, the format and the layout of the budget binder and in some of these details and notes far more than I recollect being there, I guess. And whether it's just me, I have more clarity about what staff has presented here than I typically have every year. So that's been somewhat helpful so that a bunch of my questions this year haven't come forth. And and Counselor Moffett is correct that that certainly, given the the explanations that the department heads came to date, yeah, have I had some new questions that I'm going to ponder over this again? But that's just speaking personally, that's why I have less questions today than I typically do when we go through this for the first round, because I found the information more helpful and more fulsome to me anyway.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. Yeah, I I agree with Counselor DeVallin. We've had the binder since before Christmas, so we've had lots of time to to look at it all. This is our third budget that this council has gone through together. As our C A O stated at the beginning of the meeting, so much is from council direction, from our strategic plan for this term of council, from all kinds of different documents and things along the way. So I was thinking actually as today, it's like, you know, at the end of each segment, Warden, you ask, are there any questions? And a lot of people know because this is sort of what we said we would do. So a lot of the numbers and the justification for it and everything else, it's not that we we don't need to get into a big battle. It's that we set our plan three years ago and now we're kind of going forward. And and so it has been a quiet day if anyone is listening in or watching. But I think that's a good thing. I think it goes to show how staff and council are working in tandem and direction from councils come year over year. So, you know, I I think we're really close and I think we're just going to be fine tuning a few things such as the, you know, the option for in the public works department and there may be a few more things that we think about. And it sounds like we're going to have an opportunity at council meetings or committee, the whole means to discuss.
So you know, what I would ask everyone to do is to is to just think about the information you've been given today. Take another look at the any comments that you might have written down or your thoughts that you might have had and and kind of be prepared to bring them to the next discussion that we have about this. I know that there's a couple of things that I want to ask about. And and am prepared to do so. So we'll see how our next meeting goes unless you're looking for something more than that. Was there further wrap-up information that or presentation that you wanted to do, Mike?
I don't think so. I think Elaine had a summary slide. But I'm not sure there's new information in it, but but there was a summary slide.
Yeah, there isn't any new information. Sorry, I put up my hand, but I'm blocked by the host with the, my video is blocked.
I can't see your hand, Elaine.
Yeah, I know. Anyway, sorry, I keep interrupting because of that. Yes, my summary slide didn't add anything new. But I guess the one question is whether or not you're comfortable with the 3.86% increase in the tax rate. And the other point that I wanted to make that's not actually on that slide is this rendition of the budget excludes amortization, which if you remember historically, it's a non-cash item, so it has no impact on the levy. And the reason I exclude it is so you can see division over division, the changes from 2020 to 21 to 2021 without it being without it being skewed. So that is the only other comment I had.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. Thanks. I had one, two comments. One is really brief. Council expenses looked like they were the same as what we had budgeted for 2020. We were underspent. We're probably going to be zooming for quite some time. I it may seem very insignificant, but I think every thousand, $2,000 should be questioned. And I wonder if we, there's a possible reduction there. So just hold that. That's an idea. And also, the public works section that we were talking about with the options one, two, and three in the proposed budget of the 3.86, is there, and what what's in the budget currently for for any of that?
Option two.
Option two was in there. Okay, thank you.
And that amount is 310,000 of debt.
Okay, other questions at this point in time? All right, hearing none, I would ask for a mover and a second or for the confirmation by law. Counselor DeVallin, Counselor Shell, thank you.
Move by Counselor DeVallin, second of my Counselor Shell, be it resolved that by law 4027 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the January 11th, 2021, special meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of corporation be affixed.
All in favor. That's carried. Okay, there is no other items of business for today. I'm sure that we'll be have a relatively, we do have a busy day on Wednesday, no doubt about it. If I could have a mover and a second or for adjournment. Counselor Moffett and Counselor Burton.
Move by Counselor Moffett, second of my Counselor Burton, be it resolved that the January 11th, 2021 special meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor. Carried. Thanks, everyone. See you Wednesday.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.